A little delayed, so if we accidentally talk over you, it's not intentional. Slide, alright, we're gonna call this meeting to order at seven o'clock, please. Board number seven is going to us.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would consider any changes or additions to the agenda. During that, we're gonna move on to reports and presentations. And this is really a fun opportunity for us as a board to have a work study where we talk about some of the things that we're looking forward to in this new year. Travis, if you have anything to say, please just speak out. Because me trying to remember to look up there for your little hand raised. So, okay, alright, thank you. We're gonna talk about our twenty-five, twenty-six board goals. We actually presented them at the last meeting, they are posted on our walls and they will be in our buildings. But what we would like to today, talk about some of the benchmarks that we hope to achieve. As we are looking at our board goals, that we know that we're actually moving forward on those. So, our academic success goal, under academic pillar of our strategic plan, is to clearly communicate expectations, recognize academic success through multiple measures of mastery. And the things that we are hoping to do is approve clear policy language. And that means that we need to look at and update policies defining multiple measures of mastery. And what does clear communication look like? And I want to give a shout out on this aspect that I believe that Superintendent Brower has been doing a great job on our back to school day with the teachers. He was very explicit about what we were looking at and how, what our goals were and how we were going to move forward and expectations around that. And Sally has been doing a good job also of really setting this stage so that we will, it will be anticipated that we'll be asking for multiple measures of mastery. And so I think that that has, that work is moving forward, I really appreciate that. Set district-wide vision and priorities, that has been going forward with our goals, with our strategic plan. And I know that, Jay, did you wanna have any conversation on what you're doing with your cabinet? Or with the principals and teachers, that sort of thing?
With regards to the-
Setting the district-wide vision and priorities.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't think it's a surprise that we worked really hard, fifteen hundred of us, to get our strategic plan in place. So it's our plan, it's nobody else, it's a seat in the middle, so it's nothing, nothing cut and pasted from anywhere. And so, we wanna make sure it is actionable. And so, beginning with last year, we worked very, very hard to work on our academic achievement. And that's, that will be, I'm certain, my goal for the entire time that I'm here. I don't think that'll change. We saw some great results in science and also in English Language Arts. And this year, we're going to continue that. Part of that was because we worked really hard on attendance. And we'll continue to do that, but also it's because our, we've done some adoptions. We did adoption last year and, and also, we have great staff members who are working really hard to make sure our students have what they need to be most successful. At the same time, we know that we've got some work in math. So, we, we set that forth, that that's an area of real added focus in addition to it. So, we are looking at math committees, but also perhaps an adoption at the elementary level for math. Because it's something that he has spent a long time, I'm not sure if he'll ever get it done. And then, aside from that, we're just challenging the first year. We, we are now at about nineteen months of no interrupted on-time schedules for bus routes. That's the record. Every time we mention that at any superintendent meeting or anywhere else, then we give applause. Today again in one meeting. And so, we, we work hard to get our kids to school. And now, last year, we asked parents, you know, please, can you join us in getting your kids to school? We already have the buses, and so whether on the bus or some other way, can we get kids to school? And then, this year, we are going to be very intentional about being all-in or being present. Not only as a staff, being physically present, but also emotionally and, and physically and mentally, you know, present for our kids all year long. And, and so, that's kind of what we outlined this year for. That, I'm really excited about the second piece, which is preparation for life. Because honestly, a lot of what we're doing is saying our kids up for present success, but also for that future success, which is kind of beginning with the end in mind. As we often say, that is what we're after. We're trying to make sure that they're very successful when they leave here to go and become anything they want to, that they're prepared for that. So that's what we're after.
That's great, thank you for sharing. We're working off of this document, I don't know if you have it, you have it? Okay, alright. Then, the other thing that we've set as a benchmark is to allocate resources for professional development, technology and communication platforms to support the goal. And I'd like to also recognize that at the back to school, there was some really great PD around our new technology. And so, Jay's off to a good start, or his leadership team's off to a great start. And we're looking forward to extra touch-ins throughout the year on that. Promote community engagement, where we can highlight student mastery in our board meetings and in public events. And that's one thing that I'm really looking forward to, making sure that we have opportunity for our community to come together to celebrate, but also to help us come find some resolutions and some solutions to some of our question problems we're gonna have coming up. Because we know when we get our community together, that's when we really, things happen. Yep, it makes a difference, our community's awesome that way. Alright, and then, the last thing on this first goal is evaluate superintendent on the progress. So, we have made a commitment that we will do our superintendent evaluations, we do January mid-year. And then we follow up in May-June. And so, holding Jay accountable for leading our district in the right direction. And our, our community holds us accountable, right, as elected individuals? Alright, so that's our number-one goal, academic success and clearly community expectations and recognizing academic success through multiple measures of mastery. Second one, preparation for life, which is also a pillar that came from our community and our strategic plan. And so, we will create experiences that enable our students to turn interest into career exploration and develop skills that will prepare them for life beyond high school. So, as we look at the benchmarks or standards, we have approved clear policy language. That's something that I, hopefully, we can look at today. We do have a CTE policy, a Career Technical Education Policy, twenty-one seventy. Further on the agenda, we'll just put eyes on it to see if it's something that we feel like meets the benchmark here that we've set. If we need to do any changes, we can do that at a future meeting, but this is just for reference to this goal conversation set. And we're going to set strategic priorities where we embed career exploration and life skills into the district strategic plan. We've put it in the plan, now we need to do more than that, we need to put it into action. And that clearly communicated to our super, our principals, I'm sorry. Don't you believe at middle and high school, Jay, that your principals are aware that this is our plan? And we're gonna get this moving forward? And allocating the resources. CT is one of those things that we are strong supporters of. And we wanna make sure, not only do you need to allocate the resources, we need to make sure that if we are doing CTE work, that we have all of the right paperwork in place so that we are being funded for CTE work. So, getting people that are smarter than us on that and putting eyes on everything we're doing, and it's gonna be really important. Looking into job shadows and internships, that is not going to be easy work. That's kind, it's, I think our community is welcoming and willing. But I think it's going to be something else, and we are gonna have to take it step by step. So, I would like to propose that we partner with the business association and maybe doing some communication out, or even perhaps a presentation to them about creating opportunities for internships. And also partnering with the CTE committee with Bethel School District, who houses our Skill Center students, to make sure that we, our kids aren't missing out on internship, internship opportunities because they're Eatonville kids. We've gotta make sure that they're represented there as well. Okay, expand partnerships with local businesses, colleges and trade organizations. We have a trade organization that donates gift cards to us every year, The Longshoreman. And I think we probably should be partnering with them more than just gift cards at Christmas time. So, maybe we could reach out to them, they're generous. IBW has come out to our job fairs, they're a local electrical union. I think that we should just be looking for more partnerships than sometimes just the gift card that they hand out or the cool hats. Alright, stop me, anybody have anything they wanna say about this? I'm trying to get Ashley to where she needs to go. Alright, expand partnerships, we've got that, monitor access and equity. Ensure that career exploration opportunities are accessible to all students, regardless of background or location. Report from Career Center and new platforms and find out when and add to the calendar. So, I think, one of the things I'm really glad that we have is we have that beyond for our special needs students. Can you share a little bit about the program that we have that extends beyond the high school, typical high school years?
Right, yeah, so, we have a, I think, a pretty robust program, especially for a district of our size where our students are doing things such as their, making sure we have a need to have mail delivered around our school districts to get things to and fro. And so, we have our special needs students that do that, we have students who run the coffee center, we have students that today, just today, came around and they're learning about recycling, they got it all recycling in the district office. And so, we, we, and then, Mr., Mr. Wes Potter is, I met with him for about an hour earlier this year to talk about all the things that he's doing. And I know by his word, and he has something showing out, each of the students are engaged in what they're gonna be doing. It's very practical about that. So, we just, I also send kids around to different businesses so that they can do things in the areas. I think what we need to do is expand that, to get more in their life experiences and, and challenge kids wherever they're at and take them to the runways, but, and very robust.
Awesome, it might be really great to have Wes come out and maybe share, and maybe some of the students, if they're willing to come and share what they're doing, that would be, as we look at progress reporting, would be something I'd really like to see. As well as a report from our CTE kids that are going to Skill Center, would be great to hear from them. And we always have our CTE representative now, but I think the Skill Center, okay. So, that is kind of our scope and our standards and benchmarks, the work that we have, we've set aside for ourselves. And in turn, Superintendent Brower has been giving his marching orders, and I know he's working with his very skilled team to make good things happen for kids. Any questions or anything anybody wanted to add to this work? I'm excited. It's gonna be great here, it's right here for kids.
There's, there's, there's so much available for our kids. And, you know, I know, I can say personally that my son has taken advantage of a lot of the extra stuff that's available. Very meaningful part.
I love the idea that kids can go to the Skill Center, or even here in some of our CTE classes, and then leave with certificates. That, that them, you know, on their resume, they're one step ahead than other people who are graduated from high school.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to maybe eventually talk with Tracy or JuJ or the team about is looking at opportunities for our special needs kids, maybe in job placements outside even the district. I know other districts have like students that are able to go to like the Target Warehouse and Learning Center. We've got the Amazon and IKEA Center right down the road. Maybe there's opportunities with the Skill Center, you know, I don't know if Bethel has relationships with their those areas for high-needs kids and stuff, but it could be a really good opportunity to find some transitional opportunities for those kids as well, so.
We used to have a partnership, I apologize that I'm not up on this, but the fact that I'm not is states that we need to do some investigating. Morning, what was it called, Morning Promise? It was an outside agency that partnered with our district to help kids get jobs outside. And, and even that post twenty-two, now twenty-two years old, what's it called, Morning Promise? I'll find out, but if we don't still have that partnership, we probably should look into doing it again. Because they are a private philanthropic group that specifically does that, and they have a network, so, that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's just great, it's a, we struggle with less industry in our area to place kids their junior, senior years for those transitional job programs. But, just something that, you know, for me personally, as a board member, I'd like to look into and help out with, and so.
I love that.
Yeah, thank you Travis, but, I mean, can we look out to our local community too? I mean, we don't have a lot of industry here, but-
Absolutely, well, I know-
Plaza or Center Street Junction, Mill House.
I think both Center Street and Mill House have our students, and they're post, even not our students, but the post-twenty-two-year-olds. They employ them, and so, yeah. And, but, and they have good resources, they're connected really well. And when Tina Schmidt was part of the Sage Group, it was really active in that getting kids to the next level. And so, I, I'll talk to her, and then we need, I haven't met with Sage, because they meet on a time when I can't get here, but another conversation we have, so, work we need to do.
Right, and that's good.
Okay, Cassie, can you put in your notes that we need to follow up on that?
Yep, I've got it already.
You're the best, thank you. Alright. Like Jay always says, the biggest room in the house is the room for improvement. Right, and keep it growing. Okay, we're done with board goals. We're gonna move on to policy twenty-one seventy, which is our Career Technical Education Policy. And I'd like everybody to take a glance at it. And the purpose of reading through is, are we meeting the, our current expectations? It hasn't been updated since two thousand eighteen. I highlighted what I think, I mean, I have, I have my thoughts on what here everybody else's thoughts, but I'm gonna give you some quiet reading time to make sure everybody's refreshing their minds. Okay, does anybody have any thoughts as they read through this, that they wanna?
I would like to, I don't have in the top of my head what I would like it to say, or what, if it's, I'm thinking more procedure versus policy. But the second two paragraphs, I really would like to look at some of, what are we doing to really annually review? What does the committee do? I know that, you know, our structure is that the high school works a lot with our CTE director to create frameworks. Where, where is the role of us and the board and Jay in that? You know, like, that, that review process, I mean, I'd like to just look at that language and look at what we're offering, making sure it's up to, to modern practices. I mean, I, I don't know where our role ends and begins in there, but it's just, that's why I wanna look at that language.
Yeah, well, and actually, it's interesting that you brought that up, because I have in my notes here. We actually, we had a report that came forward, and do you remember when we did the, I don't know if you were at this meeting, but we talked about and reviewed the cybersecurity, and it was really something, and what I love about this is it says that it will relate to clear career technical education programs to employment demands and to the needs and interests of students. And so, that cybersecurity piece was one that they saw as a need for employment demand, but it was brought to them by the students. And so, and they, if you recall, they came to our board meeting, they presented to us, and we looked and reviewed that curriculum and those frameworks. So, I feel like that was real, I felt like that was a good representation, that we're doing that well. But that doesn't mean we don't need to continue to do that. And so, what does that look like?
Yeah, as well as looking at that phrase, committees will advise the district on cur-, like, what committee? Do we have an official CTE committee, do we not?
Well, we do have an official CTE committee, however, I'm giving you this, however, it's partnered with Bethel because they house our Skill Center. And, and the thought process around this, and Paulette has asked us, she and I both sat on the local CTE team at one point. And it used to be local, they've expanded to be part of Bethel School District, simply for the reason that if we're looking at internships and partnerships and employment opportunities, if we broaden our CTE committee to include those with the Skill Center in Bethel, that we feel like we serve our students better. So, that being said, there is a committee. We also have your committee sign-ups that we've put around for us aboard. I don't know who signed up for CTE on that, has anybody signed up?
Well, I know Paulette wanted, to be honest, but she's the only person, we can have more, I mean, we probably have two more.
We don't have two.
We can have, they want more people there, Kelly Powell would love to have more people involved.
Local representatives.
Local representatives to help strengthen for our kids.
Yeah, so, I didn't, I will sign up, I wanted to leave room for our new board member that comes on, so I haven't signed up for that yet. I know that, but I think we're all kind of doing that, like, we don't wanna hog everything, we want whoever's newly elected to have some opportunities too. So, does that answer your question Travis? Do we have a committee? The answer is yes.
Yes.
And we do get an annual report for them, and, which is exciting, we're gonna be coming up on our calendar next, so you'll see where we'll be getting, receiving those reports. And then, the other thing that I highlighted is that we need to address the skills gap of Washington's economy and provide opportunities for dual credit. I think we're doing good on the dual credit. I'm, I'm really excited about the work that's happening there. But addressing the skills gap in Washington's economy, I would love some data on what that is. Like, how do we know what it is?
I can, I, I'm part of an organization too, I can try to find from like WorkSource, Washington and a few other things, some information on that. There's also a CTE expanding funding to sixth grade. It may open up some opportunities for high school credit and the middle school and some more flow for work-related training from sixth grade even on up, for whether it be in cybersecurity, on those types of things. Just trying to keep it relevant, so that's something to look forward to too, is that the sixth grade will be included in CTE funding as well next year.
That's awesome.
It's not this year, but.
That's great, and when we schedule the CTE conversation, it would be great to have some of that information from WorkSource so that we can, or if you could share with Kelly Powell, it can be part of the presentation, but I would like to know what those gaps are.
Also, tomorrow, I'm meeting with a superintendent who is pretty far down the road, kind of known in the state as, from Elba. Chris from Elba, the superintendent, and we're going to be talking about just what they've done with career technical education and how, how they got so advanced. And then, also, I'm on the governing board for the Pirskey Skill Center as a superintendent to kind of make sure that's run or that we can give the input, go for you and go to. So, we're involved to a degree, but as mentioned, we can do a lot better.
Yeah, and I know annually, or as often as we want, I've always gotten into the Skill Center every time that I wanna go and check things out, all I do is give them a call, they get me in. So, any, and I know annually, they invite us as well.
Right, and we do, we have in the past taken different families down there who may not even be part of happy education. And that was because Ashley and I, we worked on that early, early on, to finally happen. And so, it's, yeah, we, we're working really hard to make sure people are aware about the Pirskey Skill Center and others.
Yeah. Well, I feel like this, I, I believe that our policy at this point sets the bar. And I think we have work that we can continue to do, I don't know that we necessarily need any improving. If you do feel that way, this isn't the meeting for that, we could address, you could bring forward amendment to a board meeting. We can consider amending this, but I felt like it met the standard.
And I think what you as a board want annually, at the end of each year, to have, perhaps as a study session, to have our current technical education coordinator, Ms. Powell, and, and I was kind of come forward and give a report as to where things are at, especially given this year that we're looking at preparation for life.
It's on the calendar.
It's on that.
Which we, we will be coming up on soon on this. Okay, so, we did that, policy twenty-one seventy. Now, we're gonna have a quick conversation around our policy twelve fifty, student representatives on the board. And last year's a little bit crazy with all of the construction, and there was just a lot of, lot of busy, busyness and busy meetings. And so, getting the word out to students in time for them to apply to be student reps. At the end of last year, it just didn't work out, so we're doing, we're, this says we should do it in the spring, which we should. We didn't, we're doing it in the fall, so it will be open until the nineteenth of September for applicants. Our policy says it will have one junior, one senior. I know that there has a Ruby who served as our junior last year, and who's just a really great representative, is, was a Running Start student and is still a Running Start student, however, she's full-time Running Start, and our policy does state that you need to have one class at the high school if you're going to be a representative. And, and the reason, and I talked to the principal, getting some feedback, the reason for that is that they really are, one, they're getting a credit for it. So, there's that, which also could be a conflict with Running Start and funding and all that, because you are receiving a credit. But two, that they could be in the ASB meetings and be counseling with the ASB if they're going to be the representatives. And so, I think it's a really important standard to keep, that if you're going to be the high school or Eatonville School District Student Representative, that you participate in at least one class a day. That being said, I'm a huge proponent of Running Start and Skill Center. And, and this isn't a decision we can make, but I'd like to throw it out to see if we have kind of some consensus moving forward. I do believe that it would be appropriate for us to establish a Running Start slash or, and/or Skill Center representative that can help represent students who aren't necessarily here on campus, but could have a voice and continue to be a representative. Any other activities that they might participate on campus, but also representing our students who aren't here. Is that, if that is something that everybody's interested in, we could propose an amendment to this policy at our next meeting. So, let me think, so we would have three student representatives, possibly.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be really powerful, because we also might get insight as to what we may be able to add or offer that would keep kids here potentially. And also, what they're going into, again, going back to that CTE conversation, what can we help set them up for in, with dual credit even here, if they're transitioning into getting their AA already? Or a career, I mean, it gives us some more pathways to understand the flow, especially if we can't waive the single credit option. Because we're, you know, we're just losing out on students that do, you know, I think about, not that it's about Ruby necessarily, but the fact that she gave a lot of time to our middle school and did some assistance there, and, and that should count for something besides just a class at the high school, but I totally understand the budget thing and the class at the high school need with a credit. So, how can we still have that, that, that effort and that type of support for our students that are doing other things as well? So, I think that'd be a great amendment potentially, so.
Okay, so, then, we'll bring forward amendments at our next business meeting, where we're actually looking at policies where we can vote. That sound good?
I think it's a great addition to cover all the pathways that our students are doing. And, yeah, and then, and then, can't we clarify, so if there is a credit or whatnot, is it gonna affect them, like per se Ruby with Running Start?
If it, so, financially. Right, if she is a Running Start student, if she's a Running Start student and she's not attending one class, then we can waive that credit. But the board policy at this point says she has to attend one class in order to be.
Okay, but we have a right to waive the credit, so it doesn't affect her.
Well, we'll write the amendment so that, running, if you are a hundred percent Running Start student and you are representative, that you do not receive the credit, the one credit. Perfect, I think that would be the best, safest, best way. Travis, that's our night? Okay, also, Principal Stewart would feel like that was a good solution. So, and I think when we take these things to our administrators, that's when we really get the honest feedback that we need. They, they do the work, we need to make sure we is. Alright, getting good work done, guys, alright, we're moving on. To our calendar, the much-awaited calendar, I'm gonna turn it over to Cassie, because she's been the champion on this, so. Share with us the work that you've been doing.
So, this has been almost a year-long project from when I started in October, and it has been a labor of love. My brain likes to be organized when it comes to board meetings, and so, the purpose was to create a meeting calendar to have thoughtful conversations and to set our district and our staff up for success. So, we're not coming to meetings willy-nilly. It was very collaborative, so how it started, we got a template from another school district, which was really nice. I didn't have to reinvent the wheel. And we filled in kind of some things that we already knew that we needed to report on annually, and then I sent it out to cabinets. My principals, our vice principals and our admin staff all looked at it. They could plug in the reports they knew they need to report on annually, or presentations they knew that they were responsible for. And it came back, and I looked at it, and then I sent it out, including the other executive assistants that keep track of. So, our EA for teaching and learning, our EA for student services, and they looked at it and plugged things in. And then we brought it to our board retreat and really dug in what you guys wanted to see and what was there. And now, we have this final product, and I know staff is excited, because now they can look at the year and say, I know how I have a report due in March, I have all this time to prepare for it, not, oh, by the way, there's a board meeting next week and I have to be there to prepare. So, it's setting them up for success, they're able to feel prepared. So, that, this is the kind of the final product, it may change as we move through the year and find things don't fit. I've already kind of found some things, like for Sally, there's a report that's due in August, it comes from the state, it doesn't come till the end of August. So, we- So we push things to September. So we may find things ebb and flow based on when they get their data, but for the most part, I think we're there. You'll see the CTE will report on there. We got our ADs reporting. Um, there's all kinds of good stuff that I'm pretty excited about. And I think staff are feeling a little bit more confident about when board meetings happen. And then they know where they need to be. So at the end result is a calendar that we have, that we can have thoughtful reports and meaningful conversations and we're all organized and we know where we need to be.
Well, and I think what I really love is that after we um, came up with our board goals, we looked at this and said, if we are going to have these benchmarks, what do we need to see? We need, we know we need to have accountability. We know that we need to see multiple measures of mastery. Have we requested for those things to be presented to us? And, and we looked at this calendar with that kind of lens of we have some very specific goals. Are we going to make sure that they're articulated in our calendar so that those presentations come forward? And Kathy has been champion. Thank you. I cannot tell you how excited you've been. This is them. I've been nagging, so.
We were able to make it happen.
Yeah. And I guess this is to the board, if there is something that you want to see that we were, we are going to either put on Superintendent Brower's evaluation, our, our own self-assessment. We know we do that annually, our self-assessment. If there's something we want to see and it's not on this calendar, you need to speak up because we need to get it on this calendar. So that, um, keep this, and then if you have questions, it's a good idea to look at it and go, I feel like I need to hear about that. So then let's write it on the calendar and show it to them.
Speaking on calendars, so we did sign up at the board retreat for the different committees. Um, and so is there any way we can have like a working calendar or something like where we can access that? And no, I don't remember when I signed up. So I, you know, and I need like when the meetings are and all that kind of stuff. So we're not just, I know we left it a lot open just in case for the newly elected board member. Um, but you know, that's a couple of months away and I don't want to miss.
I'm hoping that the people who are in charge of those committees will send us calendars.
So I was kind of going to get it finalized, but I have sent the ones that are full, I sent to those people that have are in charge of the committees saying, hey, these two board members are now on your committee. You need to make sure and send them calendar requests for your meetings. So you guys should be getting calendar requests. I'll follow back up once um, we kind of get this finalized and dialed in. For the most part, but that is their job is to make sure that the committees are leading, that you guys are getting calendar invites for those things too. And if you want a printed out version of that, I'm happy to give you one.
Yes, please. Thank you. All right. Anything, anybody else have any comments on all of the reports and conversations? Travis, anything you want to share, thoughts? Okay, good. All right. Paul, anything? Okay. Ashley? Okay. All right. Then we're going to go to Superintendent Comments. Nope, we have something else. Bud, board budget, that's right. Sorry. I crossed off the wrong thing on my agenda. Board budget. I actually asked how that's, and I guess I wanted to in a public forum, talk about, um, we are in a place where we're cutting back. We're all going to have to tighten our belts and that has to start with us. And so we have made a commitment um, that we are going to, uh, we're going, all going to go to the laws conference this year because we're going to have a new board member. And the law states that you have to do OPMA and then there's board bootcamp and all those legal constructs. And we as a board need to go and support our new board member and make sure that we're all working as a team moving forward. So, um, but any other conferences that we would like to attend, we've all committed to doing that at our own expense. Um, which is not what most school districts do. That's paid for all of that. And we are volunteers. So we are volunteering to pay for the privilege of representing our students well, because we are asking other people in this district to do hard things. So I commend each of you for being willing to do that. Thank you. Um, our community does not understand how, how lucky they are, how each of you as leaders.
We do take away a lot from.
We do. Special development at, for us as a board is really important. It's valuable.
And even traveling, we've come back with extra skills and um, weighed pathways that other districts, you know, solve problems that we didn't have before. And we.
Yeah, yeah. We can, we bow with the calendar. You should have seen me in that, that presentation. I was just like, the heavens opened and the light was coming down. It was amazing. Okay. Um, so yes, thank you for that. Um, the other thing I wanted to recognize, because this was a new learning for me and I've been on the board for nineteen, nineteen years. Long time, been on board a long time. Um, and I don't know why I failed to realize that uh, what comes out of our board budget. It is very expensive for our elections. I assumed that Pierce County paid for our elections. We paid for the elections. And that means that on the odd years, we have um, elections, not just for our levies. I knew we paid for levies and bonds. I knew that. But I didn't realize that we paid for our provisions. And I didn't realize how expensive it got when we had primary races. Because you're paying a lot more when you have a primary versus just a general election. So just for this year, we do not have a primary. We just have a general election. It's thirty six thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. That's a lot that we, you know, we're, we were required and mandated to do it, but it's one way. See? She's the.
I've been on the board forever.
Yes. We need to know that. I thought the county paid for that.
I did too.
So without, so we have the number for without uh, primary, what is it, what is the cost of the primary?
It doubles.
It doubled. So it's.
It would be seven, seventy two. This, this year, this year, and it's going to go up every year, right?
Yeah. No, I was not aware of that.
Yeah. And I knew that we, I knew bonds and levies, but.
Does he even go beyond that? If there's, so like our election, there's three seats. So if say we had.
Yeah, when it's, yes, it's more when you have three, yes. So it goes up, it's different every single time. And we do try to budget for that. But when I was looking at budgets somewhere, we could tighten our belt. When I saw that, I went.
Yeah. Didn't know that.
So thank you to Krista for bringing that. It's not anything we can change, but I just wanted it to be, I just, I wanted everyone to know that there are costs, um, unfunded mandates, right? That happened. I'm, I'm running in a post, but it can still have to pay for that election, even if we're all running, we'd still have to pay for that. So. Yeah. Okay. Um. I think as far as the board, um, that's where we're at, just expressing our gratitude to everybody who's willing to tighten their belts. And it starts with us. With that, now I can move on to.
We can.
Yeah, thank you. Well, in the same, um, we, there is a budget constraint. Um, we have our inflationary expenditures outweighing our inflationary revenues. In other words, we're, we, we are on, on a trend that we have to, that we've been working on hard, we'll continue to do so. But I appreciate the board's commitment and uh, you know, my commitment as well, you know, my, the, the sorts of professional development opportunities. I'll take advantage of. I can do it other ways with, you know, web, webinars and, and different things. So continue to, uh, I really, I'm still fairly new as a superintendent. So I'll continue uh, on overdrive with um, my professional development. But yeah, I won't be really going to really make conferences or uh, or you know, outside of the district much, uh, because uh, I lean a lot, but um, there's other ways I can do that. So in the same way, yeah, we're trying to work as an entire district on our efficiencies. At the same time, we're trying to figure out how we can also um, uh, increase our revenues. So a lot of our time is being spent on, you know, what are the ways such a CTE? Um, are there, are there some things we can do to best serve our students? But also, you know, create additional revenue for, for our students. And so we'll continue to do that. That's my commitment. Um, I'm excited to um, report that as far as the stadium goes. We uh, then be on our forefront kind of foreminds this year as we uh, kind of do it maybe once in, for me at least, once in a lifetime, you know, thing where we get a, a new stadium and such. Um, and so uh, the excavation is just, is, is just a couple more loads to take off. And uh, so there was a total of almost fifteen and a half inches that is down. And if you go out there, you'll see the track is still there and then you'll look down, you'll see how far they've brought that down. And that is so that now we are ready. Um, uh, we just made a post about an hour ago. That um, now the drainage rock is coming in. Uh, so literally as the last of the dirt is going out, the drainage rock is now coming in. Um, so we can make sure that the proper drainage is such that we know comply with all our laws and this, and this, and the town. And uh, so now we'll be building that back up, um, you know, uh, right away now. So the weather's been favorable and our contractor's been working really hard to make that happen. Um, so at the same time, we're working really closely with, on, on some of the other aspects of getting restrooms, our, our lights, our scoreboard, our play clocks, our goalposts. Um, and of course our, our actual bleachers, our stadium. And so we're just, just continuing to make the phone calls. We'll keep having meetings to make sure that we're on track with that. And again, things are moving pretty quickly there. I'm really hopeful that by the end of the year, as we said, December thirty first, we can have all those things in place. How, and after a really delayed start, then we're making up ground just as fast as we possibly can. So it's very possible by December thirty first, we will have our nature's in place, our restrooms in place, our lights in place, our field in place, the track will have the asphalt in place. We have to have the weather help us um, for the curing piece. And so we will not be putting down the last rubberized layer until this coming March. And then uh, we'll be inviting everybody to come to a, a, a ground, um, excuse me, to a ribbon cutting. We already had the groundbreaking and the river cutting and, and um, it'll be a great treasure for, for this community. So that's kind of where we are in that process, just in the installation of the drainage field now. Um, other than that, school start out very smoothly and um, it appears at this point, with, with, and our numbers are up a bit, but I'm going to be cautiously optimistic about that. Um, and uh, let's see, so our kindergartners are also here. So we, you know, we, we have everybody on campus now and uh, I've been around just the different classrooms. The students are really excited to be here. And the staff are working very hard to make sure that they're taken, well taken care of. So uh, yeah, it's off to another great start. Uh, this is promised to be the best year ever. Um, in spite of budget constraints, we're working really hard to make sure that our students are the most successful it can be. So thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you for really hard work. All right. We're going to have board comments. Um, Ashley?
No.
I just want to say thank you for all the hard work going into almost my calendar. Um, but the year of exhaustion. And uh, and, and I just um, appreciate that we can have a collaborative effort as far as to just try and to continue to improve. And to reach out and meet the needs of all students.
Thanks for being part of that.
Hello? Um, yes, a couple of things. Um, one, I was had the privilege of going to Columbia Crest Open House and to see the um, for one thing, the amount of people who came, I mean, it was a huge attendance and it was wonderful. And then something else I noticed is, cause you know, they ask for donations of, of things and the amount of stuff that they brought was overwhelming. I mean, that they brought and donated to Columbia Crest for students and uh, and stuff. And then just the, the hap, the atmosphere, everybody was excited. Um, and then, you know, I just, I know that there's a lot of sacrifice being made. And I've spoken to a couple of people that um, the sacrifices they're happy to make, but budget wise, is creating a huge impact on them, on their life personally. And I just can't say thank you enough for the sacrifice that some of our leadership is doing. And to make things work for kids. And I'm just, I'm grateful for each and every one of them and uh, anything I can to uh, support them.
Thank you. Thank you for highlighting that. It's really important. They are for teachers and staff. They should be doing good sacrifices. Travis?
I'm good. I, this is hard to do from here. So no, I appreciate everything.
All right. Um, I have a couple of things. One, the next generation of Littenburgers has hit the house. I have a kindergartner at Eatonville Elementary this year. Um, super excited for my granddaughter to be there. Um, and then I, some shout outs to community partners. When Jay talks about how we are seeking revenue, uh, he has been really wonderful about bringing resources into our community. And part of that are these partnerships um, that he's created with LRI, um, OHOP and Arrow Lumber, along with the Eatonville, uh, Greater Eatonville Community Foundation, all bringing resources in and not asking anything from our taxpayers. So thank you, Jay, for that great work. I want to recognize the town of Eatonville and they have been wonderful partners on our project. There to help and guide and just bending over backwards to support this work. Super grateful for that because it's not that way in every uh, community. Um, the other person, other people who deserve recognition for helping bring uh, revenue in are legislators. We, we've got about one point three million dollars between the bathroom and the stadium from our legislators this last year. And we will be seeking uh, continued legislative support from them this next year. So I'll be taking you all with me to Olympia to knock on some doors and shake some hands, but also welcoming um, them here. And um, they will be, many of our legislators and dignitaries will be at the nine eleven day of service. Um, you all have been invited as well. It's a really awesome opportunity for us to gather around the flagpole to um, recognize and remember first responders who have given their life. And we'll be honoring Eatonville's only fallen officer this year. And uh, the Pierce County, what do they call it? Sheriff's Office Honor Guard, Washington State Patrol. And retired uh, Navy officer will be doing the flag ceremony for us. And so super excited about that and grateful that they're willing to come out. And the last thing, bit of exciting news, um, we've all been on this Department of Natural Resources journey. You've listened to me, who's out on about that. Um, at their most recent board meeting, I was able to um, advocate and I'm very grateful for the work that had, that really thoughtful um, work that's been done around the timber paws. Um, there was only one sail that was moved out of the paws and moved forward. And that was the Railroad Creek, Elbe Hills. And that was because it specifically supported Bethel School District. And so I'm grateful to Commissioner Up the Grove for moving that forward. I'm grateful to um, everyone on the board, including Chris Rettell, who sits on that board for seeing that that was extremely neat for us. And um, I appreciate their willingness to listen because I think they got tired of me all of a sudden. So um, there we go. That's it. And I think if there's nothing else, I call this meeting to close at ten forty seven. These are not our fastest news. Gentlemen. I talked really fast. I was trying to get everything out.
Nope.